Good afternoon. We do have a forum here, and this is our annual education facility master plan update. We do this every year in preparation for a formal vote on this. This is our original document, and from this we go into our capital improvement and our capital maintenance, which are all companion documents. Today, we have Dr. Michael, Mr. Rollins, Mr. Mills, and Mr. Criswell here, sorry, who will help make the original presentation, and then will answer any questions that we may have as a board. Dr. Michael?
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Members of the board, Dr. Wilcox. As Mrs. Brightman indicated, we're here today seeking guidance, actually, today on the educational master plan. We intend to bring it to you on June 7th for approval, so this is an opportunity for you to provide feedback to us on any edits or changes that you might want to suggest, or new direction, or anything that you want to share with us, so we can provide the document to you on June 7th for approval. The document is laid out just exactly as it has been for the last number of years. It actually follows protocol from the state and guidance that we're providing from them. Chapter 1 lays out standards and goals. Community analysis is a big part of the document, where it goes through each of the communities. Chad spends an extensive amount of time talking to planners from each of the municipalities, and going down through each high school attendance area, looking at any new developments that are occurring, any changes in pattern, work pattern, whatever that might be occurring. Chapter 3 provides an inventory of every school. This is actually a great document if someone asks you a question about a school. Do they have a gym? How much acreage do they have? What type, when was the building built? All those types of things can be found in this book, online, or if you have a hard copy of it. Enrollment data is also included. The board was provided a presentation regarding enrollment data by Deanna Newman and Chad within the last couple of months. That information is required to be in this document for the state. And then our facilities needs, you know, what is it that we're looking for? What's our long-term plan, is part of the document. Little oversight that we've been providing, review of our entire facilities area, without including this property, any of the three properties, JDC, Winter Street, Kona-Kajig, and the 820 property. We're looking at a little over 1,100 acres that we're responsible for in maintaining, and including, you know, not only the school grounds, but blacktop sidewalks, all those types of things. Forty-six educational facilities. You can see how they break down, elementary, middle, high, also specialized facilities like our 701 building, Barbara Ingram Tech High, JDC. So you can say we're looking at between 3.3 and 3.4 million square feet that we need to maintain annually, and it takes an extensive effort to do that. Certainly credit Mark and his team for ongoing maintenance and cleanliness of the buildings. Very important part of reducing cost is to maintain them properly as we move forward. This is a slide we provided to the county commissioners and to the board back in the fall. Just an idea, roughly, what do we look at when we're talking about how often do we want to replace a school? So we're building schools we hope to last approximately 50 years. To do that, just a little over, you know, we knew just a little under a building a year we should be opening to stay on that 50-year schedule. Just a minute, we're going to show you a slide that gives you an update of how the age of some of our buildings, but I think that's an important slide to remember. Look at roof boiler-chiller systems. These are just rough estimates of how long we anticipate them to last, and how often we'd have to replace them. So again, an example of roofs, we should be doing, by the numbers, 2.3 roofs a year, in order to keep up with our roof schedule, replacing roofs every 20 years. As Mrs. Brightman indicated earlier, this is, the document is updated annually. If you go back 10 years and look at the document from 10 years ago, probably many of the things in that document may have occurred, may not have occurred, as priorities have changed to the board, as enrollment data's changed, as facility maintenance requirements change. So again, this does change annually. There is nothing in this document that can't be 100% changed from last year to this year, from this draft to a draft going forward for June 7th. One of the big parts that we have maintained as one of our goals is to be fiscally responsible, and that's not only important for our taxpayers, but we've also constantly tried to look at how do we maximize state dollars as we go through this process. This chart's a little bit hard to read, but you've seen this before. We pretty much have found our placeholder to be approximately $8.2 million. So whether we ask for $20 million, or we ask for $8 or $9 million, consistently we receive somewhere between $7.9, $9.2, or $3, and on a 10-year average, $8.2 to $8.3 million. This is the first year of the 2016 FY request that we just submitted. It was just approved by the Board of Public Works, that we actually received 100% of the state funding. That's primarily because we've had the lowest ask, actually about half of our average, is what we asked for this year. The reason for asking for such a small amount is we didn't have the local match, or the source for local match, to move forward, so we picked the most critical projects, and that's how we determined to move forward. So we feel like we left some Washington County money on the table. We hope that they'll remember that in the future, and maybe we'll get higher than our average of 8.2 in the future, when local funding is available. So we look at our five-year capital programs. Mrs. Brightman indicated, this is kind of our guiding document that kind of launches the next phase, which is the capital improvement program, which we'll bring to you in September for approval. That'll move forward to the state for our state ask, and for our county ask. So this document has a large part to do with that. Chapter 5, this is our major project sheet. It's changed drastically over the years, but basically, we reduced it to opening of Jonathan Hager. It won't require any additional funding beyond what's been approved in FY 16, or the most recent CIP request, but we will open that this year. Our next major project that we're recommending to the board is the Sharpsburg project. We would pursue planning approval for that this year. Traditionally, what's happened at the state, as we receive planning approval, they normally move forward with funding the projects. As Mr. Senator Seraphini pointed out earlier this year, there's certainly a lot more asked than there are, than there is money to receive, but we've been very successful with our ask, and we anticipate that we would receive planning approval this year for Sharpsburg, and that it would be funded over a number of years. The next two projects we have would be Western Heights and Springfield. Both of those projects, starting to, by the time we got to those projects, would be approaching that 50-year mark. They're both open schools. They both are in need of some real renovation, and that's why we have them on our major project list. Going back to the age of our infrastructure, currently, we have four buildings that would exceed that 50-year mark. Off the top of my head, Fountain Dale, Cascade, Smithburg High School. Have one more. Somebody help me out. Hancock Middle/Senior High School would exceed the 50-year mark. If we follow through with our current plan that we have outlined in this proposal by 2016, our concern is that over the 50-year mark would grow to 16 schools. So this, projected out 10 years, assumes that we complete Sharpsburg, complete Western Heights, complete Springfield, as renovations, or modernizations, or a whole new school, or however that's proceeded, but we would have 16 schools that are over 50 years old by 2026, assuming we follow this current model. So we are, instead of just shy of a school a year, we really are on pace for about a school every four years, and that remains a concern of staff that we just wanted to highlight for you. As we look at systemic projects, I think Chad referred to some of these as red line critical. These are our three projects that we're looking at that will be requesting funding in FY 18. The state match would be about 2.4 million. The local match would be approximately 1.4 million. We look at 19, we're back kind of on schedule with what we normally would ask for with systemic projects. These projects could change based on the condition, but this is when they become age-eligible for state participation, and with what Mark's team has identified is probably the most needy schools. You can see that would require 6.7 match, and about $3.9 million local match, if we were to complete all these projects after FY 19. Looking on out to 2020, which actually will be here sooner than we think, just again, another list of projects based on what we can see today, that we need to be considering as possible systemic projects. So we just wanted to provide that brief overview of the document. It's obviously several hundred pages long, and we wanted to spend the bulk of our time responding to any questions that you might have, providing any clarity that we can provide to you, and certainly produce a document that you can support on June 7th. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Brightman.
Thank you. Again, this is our opportunity to ask questions, seek information, and direction to staff before the June 7th public business session, where we will vote on this document. So this is the time for questions.
Can I ask a big-picture question before?
Sure.
You've highlighted the number of schools that will be greater than 50 years old, and I think you said that, quote, "It's a concern of staff." What does staff recommend?
Well, at some point, we'd recommend that we try to get back on the schedule that we saw for the last number of years. As you kind of look back through that average of $8.2, $8.3 million, we were keeping up with about a school a year. You recall in 2008 or '09, we opened three schools at once, Morgansville, Rockland Woods, Pangborn. You know, we've opened Bester, we've opened Antietam Academy, we've opened Ruth A. Monroe. So you start going, you open Barbara Ingram, and you start going back through the last 10 years, you can come up with pretty close to 10 projects that have opened every year. Right now, from what we can see in the county CIP, their 10-year projection, they're describing to us that they'll only be able to support three projects. As we look at our systemic request projects, we've got to balance those in there as well with the three projects that they're projecting, and that's not even opening three projects in the next 10 years. So we need to work towards better times, get back on track with the county support that we received for many, many years, and try to get back to one school a year, and/or as schools change, if we move into, you know, more of electronic age, or whatever, you know, try to address things that way. Maybe look at reconfiguring schools differently. Challenge that we see right now is I don't know where a 7, 8, 10, 12, 14-year-old goes during the day, even in electronic age, but that might be something beyond my vision that I can see. So it seems like we're going to need to continue to look at least elementary, middle schools, early high school age, for many years to come, but I might have that all wrong. I don't know. But our recommendation would be, we need to continue to pursue roughly a school a year sometime out in the near future, before that list of 14 or so grows to 25 or 30. It'll become a number too great to overcome.
Dr. Harding, I think, too, from an instructional standpoint, one of the things that we're obviously interested in, and I'm setting growth aside for a second, and some of the age of facilities, but one set of facilities that I think we have to look at are our middle schools, our open concept middle schools. They were built in the '70s. They, I think, they require some systemic renovations that will be in the tens of millions of dollars, if not more, by the time we get in, do the HVAC, the walls, and all of the kind of things that we do. So from an instructional standpoint, I think one of the priorities that we would have in the out-years, and again, setting aside some of the age of the oldest facilities, setting aside some of the growth issues that perhaps we might have in South County or other places, those are facilities I'd like to concentrate on, and we'll be talking about that as a team, but I don't know that we're prepared to make that recommendation today.
I guess I don't see how the two can be disaggregated, because when Dr. Michael talks about we were opening a school a year, yes, we were, and that's when we were seeing how many new housing starts a year, Mr. Ridenhour? I mean...
A bunch.
In the many, many hundreds, when we were dealing with mitigation and impact fees, and developers providing land for schools, and all of that has a consequence for us, right? And I would love to build a school a year. I just don't know how we get there, given the current economy. So that's why I'm asking, what is it that is, what is it you're asking the board to do in this regard, or are you just bringing us a problem?
Well, I think we need to continue to lobby the county commissioners as a partner in trying to maintain our schools.
But even if, even if they gave us the total amount that they give, that the state has historically given us per year, could we get to where you want us to be?
I don't think we could with full renovation, but if we could cut four years to two years...
Yeah, I don't either, and that's why I'm wondering what it is you're asking for from us.
Well, I think what we'd have to do, I think we'd have to look at our schools differently. We'd have to agree that we're not going to be on a 50-year replacement cycle, and maybe look at 60, or 70, or 75 years. All that would drive a different systemic look. So instead of trying to hold on, like we have at Sharpsburg, on a number of systemic projects, in anticipation of that school being renovated, we would look differently at schools. We'd say, okay, Smithburg High, you're over 50 years old, but it's not feasible that we're going to get to a point that we're going to have a full renovation. So let's look at your most critical areas. Let's try to renovate some of those areas. Let's look at systemic projects differently, and yes, parent, yes, student, yes, teacher, your building is 75 years old, but that's part of our plan. I think we would just have to look at some of that differently. And I think as you look at construction materials and things like that, as we do get the opportunity to build a new school, maybe we look at that differently. We're looking at something that lasts 75 years, or whatever our replacement cycle's reasonable to do.
Well, I would invite you, as a staff, to bring us, this is the second year you've brought us this figure, and I agree that it represents a challenge. I'm just a little puzzled as to what you're asking us to do. So if you're bringing us this figure for a second year, I would invite you to bring us a solution, such as those that you're brainstorming now, so that either the board, you can ask the board to support it, or tell the board what it is you want us to do to support what you think we need to do in order to solve the problem. I appreciate knowing that it's an issue, but let's figure out what we can do to solve it.
I would like to maybe piggyback on Dr. Harding's, when we're talking about the local contribution to these projects, and unfortunately, I didn't bring it with me today, but the county commissioner's capital projection for the next 10 years, or I think it was out seven or 10 years, they actually divide, and I believe they included Sharpsburg, but it may just be Western Heights and Springfield, middle, the two additional projects we have to look at for large capital projects in this cycle. They had it divided into three categories. They had state, local, and Board of Ed contributions. And I think I know where that came from, but I, what is your guess or information on that?
Jonathan Hager's fully funded, based on the square footage allowed by the state, and based on the formula from the state. Fully funded from the state, fully funded from the county commissioners, and we have full support for that. Sharpsburg, and what our document there, that little grid, shows is alignment, full alignment with the county commissioner's 10-year CIP projection. So Sharpsburg, they show fully funded at the most recent state formula per square foot. That obviously could change between now and the time that we bid the school, but it's used in the most recent square footage for the building and for the site for Sharpsburg, and it shows it fully funded through the three or four-year CIP process. Springfield and Western Heights, the state, based on our enrollment projections today, would only support, because those schools were built as open schools and have large footprints, the state will only support square footage using today's standards, based on projected enrollment. So as we move into something like Western Heights, if we're to build it, if we're to remodel the entire building, what the county commissioners, what I saw in their CIP document was, they would support, as the state would, the state formula for renovating X amount of square footage at Springfield, or, excuse me, Western Heights. Let's say it's 100,000 square feet. These are wrong numbers, but let's just say it's 100,000 square feet, and the formula says the state will support renovating 90,000 square feet. We would get the support for 90,000 square feet from the state, from the county, and then what the county commissioners are suggesting, the Board of Ed would pick up the balance to do that other 10,000 square feet. That's the first time we've seen anything like that, although, to your point, Dr. Harding, in the past, we've been building to a state square footage that is supported with enrollment. As we backward map into some of these schools, it might have to be done differently. What we could do with both Springfield and Western Heights is, we could choose to only renovate the portion of the building that's eligible for state and county funding, tear down the remaining portion of the building. We could build somewhere else on either one of those properties, a complete, brand-new building, again, matching the exact state square footage number and local square footage number, and there'd be no need for a contribution from the Board of Ed. By the time we get out there, four or five years out, and seek planning approval for Western Heights, we may see a total new need that would drive the square footage and participation from the state up. What if the county does grow, I think the information was shared with us, they expect the county to grow approximately 50,000 people in the next 25 years or so. Four or five years out, we suddenly have growth, our number, I'm getting into a lot of state things here, but seven years out from the opening of the school, your building has to be at 100% capacity, if the state's going to participate at 100% of the square footage cost. So I'm answering your question a long way around, but right now, the county's saying, we will support Western Heights and Springfield to the point that the state is supporting that square footage. Anything beyond that square footage, the Board of Ed would be on its own. We would need to decide, you would need to decide, boards in the future would need to decide. If the numbers remain exactly the same, do we only renovate that portion of the space, do something different with remaining space, choose to construct a complete new school, which would be 100% funded for the estimate of children seven years out from the opening of that building. So we have a variety of options here that would avoid the board needing to contribute additional money, but I think that would need to be looked at at that time.
And at this point, staff hasn't really broken those two middle schools down, where you would peel off the Board of Ed amount and see if that's functional?
The amount of money that they're using to project for Springfield and for Western Heights, or the amount of money that we're using, is using the current square footage per eligible space. That number's going to change between now and four and five years down the road. Enrollment projections are likely to change four and five years down the road. It could get better, it could get worse. The state could completely change their model. They might just go to a flat number. We're supporting X number of dollars per square foot, per student. Maybe lots of things could happen, but yes, we peeled that off. We can see what the number would be, using the current dollar figure approved at the state level. Yep.
And did the county CIP move Sharpsburg out another year?
We have aligned, that chart that you just saw is 100% aligned with the current...
With theirs.
With their current document. That's correct.
And once we do the planning, if I'm looking on the chart here, the P, which is the planning, then we are committed to Sharpsburg at that point, correct?
To do the planning, I think unless some, you know, something drastically changed, we would probably be foolish to back up, but if there's a need to back up, you could. What you'd have at that point, you'd have investments in your A&E services, up to architect and engineering services, up to the point of construction. There are additional fees for construction and for closeout of the building, but we'd have to do some type of negotiation with whatever, whoever the selected architect and engineer is, to end their contract. So you could do that, but you'd probably have $700,000, $800,000 invested in architect...
Generally speaking, once we're at that stage, we're committed, is what I'm...
That's what we've done in the past. That's correct. And the state is, well, they'll say they're not obligated. Our history has been, once they approve a project, they always try to fulfill that obligation.
Looking for questions from colleagues?
No, go ahead. I was going to take another one if nobody else had one. Go ahead.
...on the projection role that's been brought up.
Mr. Ridenhour, do you have your mic on, please?
Development projects down in Boonesboro in particular, because I think that's probably the area that's getting, except for those that are already out. King Road, is there any movement on that one at this point, or is that still kind of up in the air?
The part of King Road associates that's moved forward is the Sycamore Run development. That part is like 104 houses. I believe most recently, when I was there, I think I counted 35 units either occupied or under construction. Their plan was, between two to three years, that they would have that completely built out. At this point, I think they're well into year two with 35 units. We have met with King Road associates, talked about further potential expansion of their project, talked about a building site. We need King Road to move forward with what they're doing at some point. We want their development, because that's what helps support the Sharpsburg project. As well as some of the other developers down there, our demographers kind of roughly figured in some amount of growth for there, as well as Westfield's, because it becomes a second-tier school, excuse me, Rockland Woods District. We need the Westfield development to continue to grow. All that helps support our Sharpsburg project. We're building the Sharpsburg project at a 471, full three-round with pre-K-type setup. They don't have that many children. Right now, Boonesboro has dropped about 150 children. Over the last five or six years, for the first time in many, many years, they're actually under by just a few students. I know we've had discussions about South County. I think we shared with the board in the past, you know, right now, from what we can see, in order to move forward with a Sharpsburg County school, meaning not move forward with Sharpsburg, but move forward with South County, our only options there would be to close Sharpsburg and to do a South County school in its place, which would be approximately the same cost, same contribution from the state and from the locals. But if we didn't close Sharpsburg, it would require, at least right now from what we can see, an additional $7.5 million of local money. And that would kind of be counter to what we feel we've been charged to do, maximize state dollars on each of these projects. So we are, and credit Chad, he constantly keeps contact with all the developers and the planners. I don't know if he has any additional information. I know they have some work going on down there right now with some commercial sites of another development.
Is that commercial?
What you're running into is they're working on two pads out of six that are commercial sites. They do have the potential to build, from notes that we looked at from 2014, a number of, a substantial number, but not a large number, of single-family homes and townhomes there, but none of that is moving forward right now. But Chad, do you want to comment on any of that?
Yeah, those homes in the development Dr. Michael was talking about is identified in Chapter Two on page 18. That's the preserve at Fox, as well as the change in the King Road Associates Sycamore Run development. As Dr. Michael had indicated, they have about 104 homes total. At this point, they could build 54 homes essentially whenever they want. They have them approved for final plat. The remaining 50 homes have to be approved for final plat by the town, but that can happen at any point. Then the remainder of that development is still in the concept phase and subject to the other processes between the county and the municipalities, so.
What is the status on the Profford School Site in Boonsboro?
We've met with Mr. Fant along with the county. Of course, the county's the driving force in acquiring land, and we had a number of correspondence with him, and we met with him. The last we met, he agreed that he would come back with some information, actually a written proposal. That was to be kind of last summer. I think the communication we last saw from the county was that he still was interested, but at this point hasn't pursued it further. So I think it's still open and very, very much in play to potentially have a school site on some of the King Road property. I know, Chad, anything else to offer there?
You summed it up about the way I remembered it.
Dr. Harding's, you have a question?
My next question actually was about the Boonsboro project, so thank you for answering that. What's, what's driving the loss of enrollment at Boonsboro Elementary? Is it, is it just birth rate?
Really, I think it's one of those places where we're seeing that birth rate show up almost magnified, maybe. In other areas, we have seen no change in kindergarten enrollment, even though the birth rates for the county are down, but it seems to be in some areas, more of our country areas, that the birth rate is showing up to be exactly what our demographer has said, but it's not equally, it's not showing up equal. In town, we're seeing more consistent birth rate. Out of the county, it seems like that's definitely where it's showing up, almost magnified. Every year, we've substantially dropped in kindergarten, and then we don't have inmigration that continues to move on through the school. Of course, they pick up their magnet kids in second grade, but it, you know, as we're seeing exiting large, large fifth grades, a small kindergarten group comes in. That's why it's consistently dropped. I think right now, Chad, do you have some information from Sycamore Runs? I believe how many elementary children we have?
So we're wondering the same thing, and we're keeping an eye on it. So about monthly, I'll go in and check to see how many students we're getting out of the Sycamore Run development. Also, I like to check it to make sure it's within the range of our pupil generation rates because we certainly want to provide accurate information to the commissioners. For the past three months, we've had out of the approximate, and the town told me they thought there was just a little under 30 UNOs where people could actually live in those buildings, and they thought that might be a high number, but using that number, we had about, we have six elementary students, three middle school students, and three high school students coming out of those roughly 30 homes that could be occupied by a family, which is very close to what our pupil generation rate numbers are. It might be just a tick low, but if the 30 number's a little high, it comes down, it would be right on target with our .41, .38. So I've been watching it. So that's staying consistent. We might see that spike up. Obviously, we have some developments that create a higher range on that pupil generation average, and then other develops that come in lower, but this one seems to be right in on the average, you know, very close.
It's quite a change since two years ago when there was, I mean, I think we had people from the town of Boonsboro at this meeting, you know, when are you going to build our school? And I guess it's a cautionary tale to all of us. The same with, thinking back to my very early time on the board when we did a major redistricting to fill Rockland Woods. And as much as you, you have to live and die by the, by the projections, right? Because that's all we've got. But like, like any plan, it's only as good as its first contact with the enemy, right?
It can bite you both ways. It can be low, or it can come in high if the economy turns around and you just can't...
Well, if we missed it, I'm glad we missed it on the good side, where, where we don't have too many kids in a school. That's...
I think for the folks that, you know, Boonsboro government, and certainly they working on paying for their sewer and water taps and those pieces, they should be the biggest advocates of the Sharpsburg project at this point because we've allowed space, and it's allowing space for their growth to continue, even at a greater pace than what it is right now, based on what we can see.
My next question is, again, I guess a little bit of a big-picture question. The lists of facilities projects going out numbers of years, I assume this is the same document that goes to the commissioners, that they would have access to the list of priority projects, whether it's not, not renovations, systemic projects, which roofs come next, which chillers come next, which boilers come next?
When we, when we submit the CIP, after you approve that in September, David Brannenberg receives a document from the county generally late, early winter, late fall, early winter, and he completely populates that with all the systemic projects and the requests for support for each project.
And then when we, as we did in the last budget adjustment cycle, when we have an opportunity to move funds into doing these kinds of projects, and I know last time, Mr. South is here somewhere, maybe he's not, was asked what particular projects, I assume we just go down the list? Is that right? I mean, if, if there's an extra however many dollars that we can dedicate to facilities projects, you go to the next item on the list and try to do that one, and if there's not enough money for that one, then maybe you go to the next one. Tell me what that process is like so that I understand it and so that we can communicate it to our constituents and the commissioners if we have conversations with them about it.
Little bit of new territory for us because up until this past year, we've always had that local, full local match for our systemic projects. If a project ran over beyond the local match and the state match, we would pick that up in what we call Mark's money, or maintenance money. Some of that project-like, capital-like money, we would use that to backfill any overrun of a project. Often, we've brought you projects that one will be over the budget, one will be under the budget. Within the county CIP money in the past, we've been able to work with that money in any way we need to. State money is dedicated to the project, specific to the project. So sometimes we have what's called reverted funds. Project comes in low, the state holds on to that money, and will reallocate it to us. We think it's the same money they're giving us twice. They say that they're holding on to it, and they give it in addition to other CIP money. But we make up those deltas using the maintenance, capital-like money. The new territory we're in right now is for this upcoming year, somebody will have to help me with our exact county local match, but right now, what we're seeing in the forecast is 500,000 coming from the county. That does not touch the money that we need for next summer's projects. That'll be a start. I think we need about another 1.9 million beyond that 500,000 to do the local match. Started out at 2.56 million for our local match. We did a portion of South High already, so that came out of the money. Dr. Harding said you've asked me how much we've contributed locally. I think last time I responded about 1.7. Those are the projects we're doing this summer. Next summer, in addition to the 500,000 the county commissioners are providing, we need about 1.8, 1.9 million, if I have my numbers correct, assuming all four projects come in on schedule, on bid. Is that about right, guys? Or, I think that's correct?
But maybe I'm asking a different question then because...
I don't think I answered your question.
Years ago, when we did make budget adjustments, and I think over, it was my first term on the board, over like a three, four-year period, through budget adjustments, we did $6, $7 million worth of projects through budget adjustments, adding money to the facilities maintenance budget. Now, I assume that was not to fill holes that county, that the county was not supplying. So how did we decide which of those projects we would do and in what order?
So historically, we've had more projects than we've been able to ask or make requests from the state. So we prioritize which projects we ask the state for. I mean, the list that you saw up here a few minutes ago for 18, 19, and 20, we have projects well beyond that list. So what happened with that money that was reallocated over the last number of years, even when we got a windfall from the county commissioners of three additional million, we had our local match for state projects. We moved forward with 100% funded systemic projects to continue to reduce our number of boiler, roof, chiller projects that needed to be reduced. There's several projects coming before the board tonight that will be completely locally funded. That would be the types of things that we traditionally do from maintenance money and/or windfall money like this, or reallocated money. The list is long, the requests from principals beyond systemic projects is extensive, and that's where that type of money has been used in the past.
What I'm asking is how do we pick which are the next projects that get done?
We have...
Do we go through the same list that's here?
Deferred maintenance.
Or, or does somebody, somewhere, you know, just pick, I think we should do Williamsport this week? I mean, how, what is the process to make that happen? That's what I'm trying to get to.
Very calculated. I'll, go ahead, Mark.
It's actually, it starts with my facilities assessment and work orders and requests, and any breakdowns that we may have during, you know, the year as we're planning. A lot of those same projects you described would be projects that didn't meet the threshold of $200,000 for the state. So we have a lot of those 150, $100,000, $50,000 jobs that we have set aside that we need to do, that we would normally do with our, our maintenance funds, but those are, you know, their needs, and they're having gotten to the point where we have to do them right away. So we use the assessments, we look at our work orders, we, we poll the guys that are actually got their hands and their wrenches on, on the equipment and, and the building systems, and that's the way we decide which are the highest priorities. And we try to do those as funding becomes available. We know where that funding is and which one is the highest priority to do. May not meet state funding requirements, but it's a project that we have in the can, ready to go. Part of the deferred maintenance.
Yeah, a security vestibule would be a good example of a project like that. Not large enough unless the state has a specific initiative like they did a couple of years ago. But we're doing a number of security vestibules this year, and we've designed even more, that would not reach the $200,000 threshold, so we would throw them into the mix when we saw extra money. So things like that, that you see come before you that are in that price range, that makes sense.
Thank you. I just wanted to know that there was a process and that we have a process, and that that process can be communicated not only to us, but to the commissioners when they ask the kinds of questions they asked of Mr. South a few weeks ago. Thank you.
Mark, isn't there an A, B, and C ranking that might inform that process?
If you remember, when we do the comprehensive maintenance plan in the fall, that, that plan actually talks about the needs and a lot of the things in priority one, two, and three that we have, that we have needs for, and it also describes the deferred maintenance and the funding needs for the deferred maintenance.
I'll take another one if nobody else has anything I want to ask. I'm asking this just because it's a question I am asked frequently. Seven to eight years ago, renovation of Boonsboro High School was in the comprehensive, or in the EFMP. It's not in there anymore. What happened to that? Do we have a plan? Or is that something that's gone by the wayside because of change in development? Or what do I tell my constituents when they say, why can't we get our high school renovated?
Well, I think that starts to follow...
Is that something that went away because we're not doing Eastern, Eastern, East City High School? I've heard people ask me that.
Right. I mean, I think as we've looked at our priorities and looked at Western Heights and Springfield, we, the staff, believe they're higher priorities based on, as Dr. Wilcox indicated, being open schools and some of the challenges we have at some of the schools there that we like to address. And just, it's a priority basis right now. We've also tried to address some of the systemic issues there at Boonsboro, new HVAC, some of those projects. I believe we replaced a boiler, we've done some security measures, some ADA, the roof was just been done, roof and doors. So we've kind of attacked it a little bit different to your question earlier. How do we deal with some of these buildings that are going to exceed that 50-year mark? We're going to have to do some patchwork, which would be better to do, all as, all as a complete renovation. But right now, we have higher priorities at this point, and that's where we, that's where we place our recommendation with Western Heights and Springfield. By the time we get to Western Heights and Springfield, we might have systemic needs that exceed the county's ability or the board's ability to support those projects, and we might see those projects come or go, or get partially renovated through systemic efforts and then drop off the plan as well. But funding right now is what's driving much of that.
So the short answer to your question is renovating some of the open school, or open-classroom middle schools has become a higher priority, and in lieu of a complete renovation, we've tried to do systemic projects to address the major building systems, and since we've done that, you probably shouldn't expect a major renovation of the high school anytime soon.
I think that'd be fair to say.
Is that fair?
The other driving part is, I think, what you started to point to, the lack of enrollment growth. At one point, we were projecting Boonsboro to exceed capacity, so either through Eastern, East High School, or through renovation, some of the schools, we're going to address that. We're not seeing that at this point with our high schools.
Okay, thank you.
I think, just in, yeah, I've got it on. I think, just to dovetail on what Dr. Harding's has said, I think people would be, maybe at some point, we could take a look at all, everything we've done to our high schools, the ones that are approaching that 50-year threshold in, in almost all construction. You know, if you build a home, the life expectancy is 50 years. You do nothing to it, it's going to fall down in 50 years. So there's, there's a difference between age and effective age. You change the roof, you change the HVAC, put new windows in, new doors, new flooring, paint, whatever the case might be, it brings the effective age of that, that building down significantly. So you can have a 100-year-old building, and effectively, it's, it's 20 years old because everything but the shell, and even some of the shell has been improved. Everything is, is new or newer. So I think it's important for people to understand that, you know, we're not ignoring a 50-year-old building. We are constantly doing projects to those, those facilities to make certain that that effective age stays relatively low. And, and you, Dr. Harding's, and the, the statistics that you guys give us, I think does a very good job of showing where the, the problems are. You know, the rating system, it, it does a good job of letting us know what needs to be taken care of now and what can be put off for a little bit of time. I think we've cut our backlog. When I first came on the board, I believe our facility's backlog was like 90-some million dollars.
Deferred.
Deferred maintenance, yeah, was $90 million. Now, we've built new schools and replaced old schools, so that brought it down significantly. But also, the projects that we have done over the course of 11 years that I've been on the board has kept things reasonably operational and in, in pretty good shape. So, you know, I'm not sure when we'll see a new high school. You know, I think things are changing significantly, and, and I look over the mountain at Frederick High School, and I, you know, that you talk about getting an ulcer. Look at the cost of that, and they're getting, getting no additional space. It's just a new school. 100, what is it, 114 million at this point?
Well, I think they've cut back, and they've done some value engineering, so they've brought it down to, I think, 100 or below, but as, to your point, they didn't, that's still a lot, but they didn't gain additional space. They really had to rethink and reprioritize what they're doing.
Well, we were, I mean, when we were doing, when we were looking at Eastern High School, you know, the East End High School, we couldn't even get the land. I mean, we could not find, how long did the commissioners and you guys and everybody else involved look for a piece of land that had the acreage that was necessary, had water and sewer, and had a seller willing to sell it?
That was the question.
We could not get it. It was just not there. So, I mean, we've had to do a lot of things that we may not have wanted to do at that particular time because there was no other alternative. And, you know, building a new high school around Hagerstown or around Boonsboro or anywhere, I think, would be a difficult proposition.
Well, we did jointly two studies or updated a study and met for several years off and on with the commissioners trying to find land. And that was back when land was, it was during the Great Recession, and we thought this would be the time to do some land banking, and we still couldn't come up with something. I think some offers or some serious...
There were conversations.
Conversations, thank you.
I think that's the key.
Yeah.
But they didn't advance, as you're well aware. Because once you get an entity like ours or the commissioners involved in conversations of buying land, land prices seem to rebound significantly.
It was all in closed sessions.
At that point in time, yeah. So, but I appreciate, you know, that, those comments about what we've done. I mean, Boonsboro's had a lot of, you know, it may seem superficial to the people who are there, but there are significant projects, you know, roof, HVAC, flooring.
I'm, to emphasize, to reemphasize, I'm only asking because people ask me. And as you can imagine, I have a lot of people at Boonsboro that I talk to an awful lot, whether it's at a track meet or a chorus concert or band concert. In fact, as recently as yesterday, a teacher at Boonsboro asked me, "When's the school going to be renovated"? So, that's the only reason I ask. I have no other, I'm not asking to change anything. I just want to know what to tell constituents when they ask that question.
Mrs. Fisher?
Every once in a while, we hear the rumblings about the Boonsboro developments, and they're either moving forward or not or whatever. But the other developments that I recall hearing about maybe a year or so ago, that something was maybe going to happen again, was Cortland and Collegiate Acres. Is there anything, is that all reversed now? Is there anything going on there?
There's activity at Collegiate particularly.
Correct. Cortland, based on my discussions with the city of Hagerstown, they had resubmitted a concept plan to change the current use of the existing apartments. If I remember correctly, it was to go from three-bedroom apartments into, basically to go in and put in a divider wall and go to single-bedroom and then two-bedroom apartments. I have not been made aware of any change in their current status from the city, so it sounds like they're going to remain as is for now. And I have not heard any type of, "This is going to happen. This has a potential of happening." Basically, it was submitted, the school system offered our comments on what it would do to our enrollment, how it would impact us. I think, I believe we shared that with the Facility Committee and all those correspondence letters that we sent back to the city, and it's probably been over a year since I've heard anything about it whatsoever. With regard to Collegiate Acres, that's an excellent memory. Of course, we talked about it all last year. We were concerned about the number of apartments that are going in there, and we've been monitoring that as well. Those values have, of course, along with monitoring some of the other developments, I checked that one against the pupil generation rate. The values of students, and I'm afraid I don't remember the exact numbers, I apologize, but it's below our pupil generation rate average at this point. That doesn't mean it doesn't have the potential to get up to the Cortland Manor rates or some of the other multifamily homes that we have in the county that are up even higher than Cortland. But right now, it seems to be under that rate, and I talked to Deanna, Ms. Newman, with Public Pathways about it, and we're hoping that that remains consistent and doesn't drive forward the need for a look at Morgansville Elementary or Jonathan Hager as far as a Phase Two in the future. But we're certainly keeping a very close eye on that, as well as some of the other multifamily developments in the Morgansville region that we're starting to hear things and we're trying to, we're certainly going to keep an eye on in the future.
I think there's so many more developments in the North High, disparate pattern than there are anywhere else.
I keep telling Dr. Michael, if they just let me control how many places we build, who we let in, how many kids they can have, I could help with enrollment issues much easier.
100% accurate.
Yes, Mr. Gassford?
I have just one question. Do we have a deferred maintenance amount at this point?
Deferred maintenance, well, now let Mark give you the exact number. Deferred maintenance will come up in Mark's comprehensive maintenance plan, so it doesn't come up in this document. We don't refer to this document as our money document. We kind of look, the CIP is our money document. Comprehensive maintenance plan, which follows the CIP, is kind of our health check of our entire facilities. But, Mark, you want to give a rough idea of what you'd estimate it to be right now?
I think, when I reported in the fall, I think we were around $50 million for deferred maintenance.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure where that, I mean, we'll take all of our projects that we do this summer and all of our assessments that we have this summer, and then we'll know what our new deferred maintenance is. As we take some off the list, obviously, we bring new ones on as roofs and systemic systems, they age.
Winter Street, Conica Jig, those are going to help reduce some of that.
Does that include those coming off or not yet? Does the 50 include the two coming off?
I can't remember exactly if I included those in the fall. I want to say that I probably took them out.
Another question, Mr. Gassford?
If I could ask a question?
Sure.
I mean, the elephant in the room at this point is, this document does not contain anything to do with the Urban Education Center. I'll get the right name, I'm not sure that's it, but whatever it's called.
Urban Improvement Project Plan.
I think that's the grand plan. I'm not sure what the one building that we would be most interested in. It might be premature, but if we are to pursue anything this year, that would, we'd want that to be part of our educational master plan or reference to it or something, probably. And again, this might be premature to even ask that question, but right now, that obviously is not included in our document.
And I thought of that, sitting down here, opening up the meeting, but as a group, we haven't even come together to have the discussion, to formulate where we stand as a board on that project. So, I think it would be difficult to, I think we can certainly have the time today if someone wants to ask any questions or pursue any thoughts or ideas you might have on what we heard earlier in the work session. We certainly have time to do that, and it would be appropriate here to open up some of that discussion. But directly to your question, I'm not sure. We just, many of us have just seen some of that information today. But I will entertain questions if that would be helpful.
Oh, that was the next item on my list. If nobody else was going to ask another question, that was the next question I was going to I would not want to see us do anything at this point that would preclude us from getting the state funding that our partners, both in county government and Senator Sarafini, are working towards being part of the funding model for this project. And while certainly we, as a board, had some disagreements about the previous project, it seems to me with what was proposed this morning, we get, we would, as a board, receive as much space, at least, if not a little more, for less than half the amount of money coming from the school system. Right? Because in the previous funding model, it was $4 million in capital plus us financing $6 million worth of debt. What they presented this morning is $4 million in capital and maybe a $35,000 annual lease. So, I certainly, from my point of view, and if staff doesn't think that what was presented this morning will meet the educational needs of the students downtown, I think they need to tell us. And I don't know if they can make that statement today or whether they need some time to sort of review what the commissioners presented so they can come back with that opinion later. But if what was presented today does meet the instructional requirements for our students downtown, to me, it seems like a pretty appealing offer, that it costs a whole, less than half as much money, and we're getting as much, if not more, space than we had previously discussed. So, I support doing whatever we have to do to support the county and, with that one caveat, I support doing whatever we need to do to support the county and Senator Sarafini in their efforts to make this project move forward. And if that means putting it in the plan now, I support doing that. If that's not necessary at this time, that's okay, too. I think we just need answers from, whether it's staff or Senator Sarafini, about whether it needs to be in this document now.
And that's why I wasn't clear, because from the way, again, the project has moved forward. This is the first time we've been asked to officially become a part of it. And so, based on how the state portion, do we really need to ask? I see this document, the EFMP, is under a certain process, and this project may be a totally different process, and that's where I'm not clear.
And I'm not either. And maybe that's...
So, that's, yeah.
Maybe that's a discussion that staff needs to have with either the county or Senator Sarafini's office between now and when we would approve it, or...
Because...
I think, well, what you're hearing me saying is, I'm willing to do whatever will support the project. If that means putting it in, great. If we shouldn't put it in, that's great, too. But I don't want to lose an opportunity because we didn't get the answers we need before we vote on the document.
Because the way I see this, this will not, this project, as presented, the concept today, would not necessarily follow the process that's in an EFMP or our capital. It's really something outside of a normal process. So, it's still going to have to, if it moves forward, a school would still have to fall under MSDE accountability, you know, is, are there certain wages? You know, I don't know what we're going to be mandated to do to accomplish that building, even if it is just a $4 million price tag plus $35,000. I don't have those answers, but I have those questions.
Right. I mean, normally, if we're pursuing a project, even if we're not seeking any, for the public, well, probably, for the public, but for the public school construction dollars, we've been normally still listed as one of our plans as part of Washington County's Educational Master Plan. Would not be included in our CIP if we're not seeking public school construction dollars, if that's the direction that it's going. You know, from what our understanding, past history has been, you know, with CIP projects, we're pretty clear on what that process is. If that process is waived or we're not included in that process, it certainly moves along very differently and probably a little bit of different territory than what we're accustomed to. And I, you know, you know as much information as I know as what was presented today. If it's intended to receive public school construction dollars, then we definitely would want to include it. We definitely want to be part of the CIP. We need to start following that whole process. Time is our enemy. If we're trying to keep pace with the theater construction proposed schedule that they described today, I'm not sure, the July bidding or something was mentioned. You know, currently, we don't have a site, we don't have an architect, we, you know, don't have an ad spec, a lot of those pieces, if it's following that process and requires all those hoops. If it does not require that process, we certainly could operate differently, and we'd welcome that.
I do know Mr. Murray said, when he left earlier, that time was of the essence because the Maryland Theater, and I don't want to misquote him, but my understanding of what he said is that the Maryland Theater is moving ahead with some schematics and that they would be very interested or would need to know whether we needed to match the elevations of whatever, if we were going to do a project in between. So, again, there's a lot of unanswered questions here. Mr. Gassford?
Just to throw my two cents in, I do have a couple of questions, so I really don't want to say that I would be for it or against it, because there's still some questions that I have for the downtown. I do like the fact that it is a partnership with a lot of different people involved, but I do have a little concern with us still being $50 million, just a rough number. And I know that number's going to come down of our other schools that we still have, that we need to do some fixing around. So, you know, I still would like to, you know, say, I'm kind of with Justin, I do, I think it's a good project. I don't want to think that we would hold it up, but I also like to say, you know, we do have to have some housekeeping of ourselves when it comes to some of our projects that we're $50 million behind or whatever the number will be. So, I don't want to lose sight of, you know, our own projects at that. But I am excited about the downtown project because it is a partnership with many different entities. So, I hope that we can continue that ball rolling in that direction for them.
Mrs. Fisher? I'm not ready to say one way or the other. I mean, on the surface, it sounded good. However, I think back to the fact that when we started trying to come up with a hub plan, we wanted everything in-house, we wanted the kids not to have to travel, we wanted our own cafeteria, we wanted our own set of labs. We're not going to get that. We're not going to have them if we go with this plan. Kids are still going to have to travel, even though it might be on a covered walkway. If now, all of a sudden, they need decisions, then why didn't they involve us sooner? Why are we coming in on the tail end of it? It's almost as though they didn't want us in there early because they didn't want to honor our wishes or whatever. It's like, I just feel like now it looks like if we don't go along with it, we're against everybody in this organization that's put together this urban plan. I'd like to know if there's any other possible avenues out there we could follow to build a hub or whatever it's going to be called.
In what way?
I mean, maybe, I know we keep hearing now about the public-private partnership, and we have garnered a lot of accolades for what we have done so far, but do we have to go that route? Is there a more traditional route we could go and still get what we want? Or is it too expensive because there's no other way to do it?
Again, I think originally, the project we suspended was $15.5 million. And again, we're looking now at receiving a similar project with maybe a net positive in capacity for $4 million plus lease.
Yeah, but you read this, the numbers change from page to page. For instance, earlier, they said $4 million for us, $4 million for the county, and $5 million for the state. But on page seven, I think it is, they mention $5 million state contribution, and then the rest is $9 million. And I assume that's divided between the, not eight, but nine. So, numbers change, and I just find some of this wording vague about who's got responsibility for what. It's hard to believe that we would be able to use a cafeteria without some lease payment. I mean, that's what we've heard, but there's still too many unanswered questions for me to make any decisions.
And no one's being asked to make a decision right now.
Well, but if they're saying, you know, time is of the essence, the Maryland Theater has to know because they're already in the planning.
I didn't hear it quite that way, but, you know, put my two cents worth in because I do support it. I, you know, I'm looking at a building that's very similar to what we were hoping to get for about $10 million less. So, significantly, you know, those are numbers that I love. As far as the lease payments are concerned, what I heard Senator Sarafini say in particular was that the programs at the University of Maryland are looking at, the hospitality and the nursing program...
As far as the lease payments are concerned, what I heard Senator Sarafini say in particular was that the programs that the University of Maryland are looking at, the hospitality and the nursing programs are basically night programs, that the cafeteria will be available during the day. And consequently, they would be more than thrilled to get some kind of money out of it, a lease payment of some type, to utilize that. Same with the, with the labs. If the labs aren't being utilized during the day, it only makes sense for them to hope that we could use it. You know, my, my biggest concern this morning was, and it's remained the same, is how our lease payment's going to work out. The one thing that I heard Mr. Murray mention, which made me feel significantly better, is that they're not triple-net leases. Because with triple-net, you're not only paying the lease, you're also paying for the maintenance and taking care of the building, you know, for all intents and purposes. So, you know, there's a lot of good here. There's a lot of good with that project. I think it benefits us. From what I see so far, I see it benefiting us and also benefiting the community. So, you know, do I support it? Of course I do. I supported it when we were going to do it by ourselves. The opportunity to partner with someone else and save significant amounts of money makes it a little more, even more appealing to me. So I'm hopeful that we can work out the, the fine print and that it benefits Washington County Public Schools and our students, and that we can do it, you know, in the timeframe that needs to be done. And that's why, that's why we got you guys. You know, and that's why we hired that gentleman. Because we suspect and we believe that you guys can figure out the nuts and bolts and give us good advice as we go along.
Well, I think if it follows the traditional model, you know, again, time, I think, is going to be our enemy right now if it follows that model. If we can receive the 5 million with less strings attached and we don't have to go through the school construction model, you know, I think that makes it very different. I, we're not, I'm not familiar at all with where we are with the project since we last, you know, awarded it initially to the Bowman Development Group, you know, we're familiar with. They, they had the architect, they had the property, we had a means by which we acquired the property after they constructed the building. I'm not sure what this model is. We're hopeful that it is kind of a no strings attached. If it's a, we have to follow the school construction model, you know, send down schematics, DDs, construction documents for approval, go through the Board of Public Works. I don't know where the $5 million number comes from, but if the local board puts up eight, and if we can follow a magnet school or CTE-type program, school, model, that type of thing, we could receive substantially more than 5 million from the state, substantially more, if we're putting up eight. Four from the county, four from the board. That's, you know, our past model was to avoid prevailing wage, to avoid minority business enterprise process, to avoid some of the state procurement, things that often drive up the cost. We were trying to work around that. If we have to work through that, it would seem like our next goal would be then to go back to our, one of our guiding principles, maximize state participation. So again, those are, I'm just not, I don't know what's being proposed, but we certainly will work from our side to do everything we can to do it as quick as we possibly can, to work cooperatively, to meet the needs of things. As far as needs of space, I would try to defer back to the instructional staff. You know, our assignment has always been to fulfill the needs of the instructional staff with what they see the needs to be, and how they would manage the building, manage students, that type of thing. Today, they talked about aligning the building with the Maryland Theater. We, you know, had kind of moved on ahead of the Maryland Theater. We were aligning the building with Barbara Ingram. There becomes new challenges if we're doing both.
Sure.
Right. We, we had aligned our, if you recall the proposal, we kind of met Barbara Ingram on several floors, not every floor. I don't know how that might change based on what I thought I heard today was some alignment. I thought maybe the buildings are separate, but then today, I thought I heard some connection between the buildings. So a lot of questions to answer. But again, our, our role will be, we will absolutely do whatever the board decides to do. We will do it as quick as possible. We will maximize whatever direction the board wants us to move.
Mrs. Harschman.
It doesn't necessarily mean...
But what does it mean? It's confusing. It's not clear.
Exactly. I don't think it's for sure.
There are different kinds of questions we need to answer.
But even if you put these two together, we're still $5 million.
Right. The, the building would be raised, and the concept, when we were working with the Bowman Group, was we would align the new building with Barbara Ingram. Barbara Ingram doesn't have consistent, you know, every 12 feet, there's a floor. It's got different floor heights. So we were trying to do as most economically as possible and to work with student traffic flow, meet the building as we go up. If we moved to the other side of the building, as they build the Maryland Theater front, we would just need to work with what's happening there. Are they going to meet what we were trying to meet with Barbara Ingram? Is there some intermediate meet? And you work with ramps and things? So we switch the hallway to the other side of the building to do something different with elevators? Are we trying to just match on one or two floors with the Maryland Theater or not at all? I mean, that's all new territory. We just need to re-explore. But the original concept, building would go down, and we'd align many of those floors with Barbara Ingram.
And that was with no consideration for lining it up with Maryland Theater, correct?
Correct. Early, early on...
Early on, we had...
Early, early on, we had a concept where we would do something like that.
We're concerned with lining it up with Maryland Theater than the other one, because it's going to be gone, correct?
I don't have that concern until I hear more information.
The building was always going to be demoed. And then you had two choices, whether to line it up with the existing Barbara Ingram or line it up with the theater.
Right, right.
Or something in between.
Or something in between. Correct. Mrs. Williams, did you have a question? Yes.
As I'm thinking about it, I think this is something that we should put in the, in the facilities master plan for, for a number of reasons. We need to look no further than last year to see that it's a fluid document. The hub concept was in this document last year. We didn't build it, you know? So all this is, is it's a planning document. And if we get to a point, as we did with the hub, where it looked like it didn't make sense, or we didn't have the partners we need, we don't build it, and you change the document the following year. So that's the first reason. Second reason, we're, we're asking the county to participate. So this document drives not only the state, it sort of drives our CIP, which involves the county. So if the county's going to participate in this project to some level, seems to me we ought to have the project in our document, which, from which our CIP document flows. And, and again, I've got all the same questions you've got. I mean, who has title to the building once it's built? Who's responsible for construction? I mean, all of these things are questions that have to be worked out, that I don't think we have the answer to yet. But as with the hub project, if we, if we go another six months down the road and we don't have the answers we like, we don't have to do it, just because it's in here. But if it's not in here, it seems that we're not being clear about what our intentions are. And certainly, my intention is to explore this project and go in intending to be a partner. And if we get to some point where it doesn't make sense for us, then we back away. But I think if we put it in here now, we make clear to the community, I think to the county and to the city and to the state, that we intend to be a partner in this project. And until we find a reason that we shouldn't be, we pursue down that path. So I, I think it makes sense to have it here, and I don't know if the thing to do is to instruct staff to add it between now and June, or to bring us an amendment in June that we could add, or however. But that, that's what makes sense to me.
There's some hands going up. Yes, Mrs. Williams.
I agree with all of what Dr. Harding said, and I may not be remembering correctly, but didn't we have this discussion regarding adding the hub about this point last year? And we...
I think it was either last year or the year before, but we did have it in this discussion once.
Right. Yeah. And for that reason, all of what you said makes perfect sense to me.
Yep. Ms. Harschman.
Well, I did vote against it the first time, and that, I feel, with what we have today, is so much of an improvement.
She's got an "I," is it?
No.
It's so much of an improvement that I, I mean, I feel very encouraged with the idea of doing this. But I do also agree that we really need to make sure that it's right before we step into it. But it's such a much better plan that, you know, I'm just overwhelmed. So thank you.
I sense there's a general agreement unless somebody throws something at me to give direction to staff to add this project into the EFMP.
Okay. Certainly will.
I would suggest that it go immediately after, well, after Jonathan Hager, that's for sure. Whether it's before or after Sharpsburg, I think I'd leave the staff to make a recommendation. I mean, they're sort of the same timeframe, so.
And I would also offer, in the meantime, I'm sure Dr. Wilcox and staff will seek as much information and, and answers to questions and to try to get a clarification of how this, what the next step is, what, what funding model, what process we're going to need to go through. Is that Dr. Wilcox?
Yes. Yes.
So we'll go there. We have a few more minutes. I guess going back to an earlier discussion, if we're, I think, at a point on the UIP to move forward. When you said that you're concerned about the 16 schools that are going to be 50 years of age by 2018, did I get that right? 2020?
26. Assuming we stick with the plan we have right now, we would have that through by 2020.
Exactly. So instead of waiting till we have 16 schools that are 50 years old, should we rethink our approach to our education facility master plan and how we think about our schools? Is there, is this an opportunity to sort of reimagine? If we're not going to get money for new construction, what is the next choice? What is the other option? A little bit to what Dr. Harding has brought up. If we keep looking at the same document with the same problem, I'm not sure what we'd be forward in doing the job as a board that, that we need to do, and we need recommendations from staff to help us sort of reimagine what the new landscape and the construction might look like. Whether that's modernization, whether it's remodeling, whether we call it rehabbing, don't know. But that, but to continue to think about it the same way, where it doesn't appear that we're going to have the same funding from the county. Thoughts on that, colleagues? I, I just think it's something that we may want to ask direction from our staff sooner than later.
I agree. That's exactly what I was getting at before. I mean, as I, this is the second year they brought us the same slide. What's the solution? I mean, we, I can think of lots of solutions. Most of, I don't, I don't think any of which people in this room would like, but, you know.
Well, I mean...
If you're bringing us a problem, I'd suggest that you bring us some ideas for how to solve it.
Right. So I think, I think our rethink would be just how we approach remodeling schools. It would not be a full modernization. They would be, we would change to, what's it look like, it's 60, 65, 70-year renovation? Where's that fall or some? Do all schools fall in that same category? All schools aren't the same. Some schools that might be satisfactory, other schools that might not be appropriate to wait that long. Some schools might be able to wait longer. We would need to ask the county, I would think, to potentially change, you know, Springfield and Western Heights to taking that local match that put towards systemics and, you know, spread systemics across schools. So we do a partial, a very partial renovation to each of Springfield and Western Heights. You know, what's the most critical areas, and the remainder of the areas would need to remain the same. I think our primary would go, would be, has something changed in education and how we'd want to approach the most needed areas to change and reflect what's changed since the '70s, when those buildings have been built or other buildings.
And that's where we'd rely on the instructional department to, to help us understand that as well. And I would say we have 300 student capacity, but it's in rural areas, mostly to our west. Would staff recommend a redistricting to make use of that capacity? What would that look like? And would that be part of a solution? Not easy discussion, obviously, but...
Well, I think one of our most significant, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But the 50-year, you've used a, used a 50-year cutoff. Where'd that come from?
Kind of a standard that we try to build to. We're building to 50.
Okay, so that's not something the board's adopted?
Uh-uh.
That's just a, I mean, you could have picked 40, you could have picked 60, you could have picked 75. So, and again, none of that is anything the board's adopted. That's, that's what you're bringing us. So what you're saying is, we're falling behind according to the, the standard that staff has adopted, and now the board should fix the problem that staff has identified based on the standard that staff adopted? I mean, tell us what you want. That's, I hate to keep coming back to that, but...
Well, again, I'll...
The board didn't say, don't send kids to schools in, in any building that's over 50 years old.
Right. I think what we start to see at 50 years, we start to see, especially on buildings that are already 40 years ago built, we start to see the failure of systems that aren't easily remodeled. It's not just the roof and HVAC, it's the electrical system, not only just the switchgear, but even the, the electric line that comes into the building. It's the sewer line that comes into the building. It's the, sometimes the structure of the building. Some of the new construction methods that are being proposed, like for the Monarch Academy, that's not a 50-year structure. It's not intended to be a 50-year structure. So we might need to approach things in building 20, 25-year structures, much like retail builds. I mean, they don't build buildings the last 50 years. They build buildings for the short term so they can be generally demolished and start all over. You can think of buildings that have been built the last 25 years, the same owner or same renter has come in and demolished the building and rebuilt new grocery store. Martin's Grocery Store, pretty close by, completely, was brand new not too many years ago, completely demolished, completely rebuilt to meet their new needs and their new standards type of thing. So all those are things we might need to consider differently. So we understand what you're saying. It's a new problem that's just been presented in the last couple of years. We just may need, any approach to the example is brought up of Boonsboro expecting a new building. You know, maybe we just need to get the word out, we won't be doing buildings in this manner. I doubt that funding's going to exist to meet the timeline that we're seeing right now, because I think systemics will come to the forefront that will cause us to drive our requests differently.
I think what you're hearing is the board's happy to have this discussion, but we're asking you to drive it.
We will.
Or we can drive it for you, and I don't think you'll like that.
I, I welcome you to drive it, because it's a pretty challenging...
You might, I would not.
Yeah. If you want to pick and choose between the lesser of evils, that might be a good thing. We'll, we'll bring you the options to choose.
We could come up with a plan to have no schools over 50 years old. I mean, we could do that.
Right.
One of the questions is, do we stay within the constraints of the, of the local funding? I mean, part of what's driving the plan you see in front of you right now is, is that the county has identified that they can't, this is what they can afford. So we mirrored that. Is the board comfortable with asking, with us asking for more than what the county has identified, or do we, or do we want to stay within those constraints?
I think that's exactly what they're saying, and I think we should probably end our conversation right now. What the board is saying, they want a plan. We will give them a plan. If, we will talk about what we think is optimal. If we think a 30-year building is optimal, that's what we'll give the board. We'll give them options to pay for it if they want it. They'll take it. If they don't, they'll say, go back to a 60-year plan. This is not rocket science. This is a facilities construction, and we seem to be making it a lot harder than it needs to be right now.
We're down to five minutes. Any, any feedback, any direction? Do you feel like we're all at a good stopping?
I think we've got clear direction to add the Urban Education Center into the plan. You know, we've got a lot of questions about that, if it's, if it is or not following the public school construction process.
Remind me again, the EFMP needs to be voted on in time to be down to the state by when?
Before July 1st.
By July 1st. So if we're not, if we're not ready by the 7th, we could still do it in the, the second meeting in June.
We'll, we'll have revised draft for... We'll, we'll have a revised draft for June 7th. If for some reason you're not prepared to vote on it June 7th, it certainly can kick to the next board meeting.
And I'm hoping we can get as, collect as much information as possible on the downtown project by the 7th, and maybe even start giving us some feedback prior to the 7th.
The county's driving that process. We'll get as much as we can for you, but, but you, you have the best of their thinking to this moment. I'm not sure how much will change for them, because right now, they have no funding for the theater portion, and they haven't started their capital campaign. So for us to say we were going to match their elevate, we don't know what they're going to do, and they don't know what they're going to do. So that's going to be a difficult examination for us, but we certainly will know how we can aggregate money to participate and give that to the board, and then we will know how we could reallocate rents to support the science labs. We'll know some of that kind of stuff.
Okay, very good. All right, seeing no more discussion, we are adjourned until 3:30.